Seven o'clock, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the zoning board of appeals, the village of Bartlett, counties of Cook, DuPage, and Kane. Please call the roll.
Mike Wearden.
Here.
George Cosiel.
Here.
Joe Bano.
Here.
Bobbikaro.
Here.
Guy Papa.
Here.
Michelle Suarez. Charlie Devoe.
You have before you the minutes from the meeting of November 7th. Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We just have two comments for Luz Alvarez.
Okay.
At the time, we only had her as Lucy. She hadn't filled out a witness card, so that has been corrected. And spelling of Bobbikaro's name, corrected.
Oh. Okay, so let's, with the corrections, do we have, do we assent to that? Approve and second?
Second.
Yeah, okay. Call the roll on the improved, the new and improved edition.
All right, George Cosiel.
Yes.
Bano.
Yes.
Bobbikaro.
Yes.
Guy Papa.
Yes.
Yes.
Mike Wearden.
Yes. Okay, the only item on the agenda that says the text amendment is case number 19-18, 415 South Hickory Avenue. Are the petitioners present? Please come forward and, to the mic, let me swear you in. Do you soundly affirm that the evidence you're about to give is only the whole truth? Okay, and do we have the newspaper, the picture, and the picture of the sign?
Yes, we do.
Or the mailings? Losing it here. Okay, Mark, those exhibits A, B, and C. Go ahead and present your case.
My name's John Beards. I'm the president of JB Architecture Group in Naperville, and I am the architect for the Langfelders. And what we are here tonight for is to discuss a variation on the setback that abuts Devon Avenue. We are asking for roughly a 13-foot encroachment into the required setback on that side there. It's hard to read from here, but the back corner, or the northernmost corner of our addition for the garage is about just shy of 60 feet off of the pavement of Devon Avenue. And then the setback is about 22 and 1/2 feet off the property line. What we're proposing here is, this is a, the existing home was built in 1973. My clients have chose to keep the home and renovate it as opposed to tearing it down and building a new one. So we've been working with the existing footprint to create a new home for them, both inside and out. Outside will be all-new siding, windows, roof. Inside, we've gotten the entire inside to create a more open plan conducive to the homes that people are looking for now. With the home, the age it is, at that time, 1973, it was pretty much standard to have a two-car garage on a home. Well, in today's market for homes, three cars are almost always the standard in any homes that I see and that I've designed over the years. So we're asking to be able to encroach into the setback to allow us to construct a third-car garage stall.
Have we heard any comments from anybody calling in and inquiring?
I have fielded numerous phone calls from people who saw the signs and were very concerned that Hickory Avenue was being extended to Devon. Once they found out it was this addition, they had no comments, and their fears were alleviated. Just to give you a little bit of history, I'm gonna change the room control so you can see.
And I know that the neighbors across the street had done some similar encroachment there when they did their remodel several years ago.
Right. This subdivision was approved in 1969, and as you can see, Devon Avenue stopped at what is South Bartlett Road and Main Street.
Right, and that was on a wind strike line.
And this is the county line. They weren't sure exactly where Devon Avenue was going to be located, so this subdivision dedicated 33 feet right-of-way, assuming half of the road would be in DuPage and half would be in Cook. When Heritage Oaks came in in 1979, they did an additional 66-foot right-of-way so that all of the road on that side is in Cook County. So the curb line is actually on the county line. So the right-of-way for Devon Avenue is significantly wider, which is why there's such a large setback, or a large distance between this proposal and the curb line.
And they have a very unique situation. That street apparently will never go through to Devon Avenue.
Correct. Roads do not align as it is currently, so it wouldn't make sense.
Right. Hickory never does. Look at how it is at North Avenue, too. It's just one of those streets. And I think this is a wonderful idea. Most people aren't even going to notice, because when the trees are in full leaf, who's gonna notice the difference?
And we're also challenged, basically with the property, we've got three street sides.
Yes.
So the, it does create a challenge in terms of where we can add on to the structure at.
It would be nice to see a bike path on that side of Devon Avenue.
That is on the bike path plan.
Is it?
It is.
Okay, good. I think it's a wonderful idea that will add value to your home. I believe that's where bank president George Bell once lived. He may have been the original owner of the house. If you would, just fill out one of those papers when you get through, and then we don't have to swear you in.
She's the homeowner. She's the homeowner.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
My parents were the Klingers, Hank and Sandra Klinger. So we moved that house from George Bell, who was the village preside, or, yeah, the banker.
Yes.
And then my mom had, the longstanding story is, my mom bought the house while my dad was on a business trip. But my mom and dad were very good friends with Glenn Kohler, who was a former village president.
Right, in the real estate.
So the longstanding story was that if that house ever came on the market, my mom and dad wanted it. So it happened. My dad was out of town. Glenn called my mom, and Glenn and my mom went and bought the house.
Right, right, wow.
So it's been, that's been my mom's pride and joy, and her dream was always that I would take it over. So that's what we're doing, and that's why we hired John to help us with that process.
Interesting point. Well, I'm glad to see that you're deciding to renovate it, not just tear it down, and do things that will, I think, increase value. You have a very unique situation with your lot size, as was pointed out, with streets on three sides, three sides, rather, and what else can you do?
My name is Jay Langfelder, husband of Amy Langfelder and the homeowner. This is a nice process, what we've been going through, with meeting John, and we've been getting a list of architects. And he came through because an owner of a company answers the phone and says, you know, that's how he does business. One thing he wanted to do, and if you cover, if you go to the first, yeah, right there, if you look at the three-car garage and the simplicity of the home, we're keeping the core of the home right there, but he wanted to go more with a Frank Lloyd Wright. We were thinking about a two-story, but talking to him, he wanted to go more with Frank Lloyd Wright, and on the edging of the, accenting the roofs, it gave a unique style because it gave it a prairie-style home, and we wanted to keep that history of that home like it is, and not disrupt the neighborhood. And that's what we were very careful with discussions with John and meeting with, sitting down with him regarding that. And like Amy said, this is their family's pride and joy. I mean, you know, Bartlett was only 2,800 people in Bartlett when this home was built, and that's when they moved in. And I want to thank the board members for taking time out to looking at, over these plans, and the administration here, too. Communicating with John and seeing what we need to do to make this more appealing. And that's what we were very conscientious about, the curb appeal of the property. We just didn't want to put a massive structure on there. We just want to make it simple. Okay? Any questions?
No, I mean, when I went out and looked at it, I, you know, it's not like you're going to encroach on a next-door neighbor and nobody else is going to be affected by it adversely, I don't think.
And that's what concerns on the back of the neighbors, the Gilberts. They were concerned that there was going to be a two-story structure, and it would be something lurching over them. But when they saw, they came on the website of the village, and they saw the three-car garage and how it's going to be a ranch, they were happy with it. And even the Andersons across the street were happy regarding the architect look on the.
Everything will be recited, and it's going to look as though it was part of the original house.
Yes, it's all, everything's all new on the outside, all-new finishes. The siding is, you know, again, to Jay's point, we're going more prairie-style to try to capture that. The roof pitches, the roof lines that are there, that were there currently, led us right into it, because it was, because they were fairly shallow. We, you know, when I first drove up to the home when I met them, the house looked like it was 1973, so it was obviously, we wanted to, we wanted to update it and create something that's gonna, that's gonna be very, very much timeless and carry on for, you know, quite a few years, so. We also look at, as much work as we're doing with the home, new windows are trying to bring up the energy efficiency value of the home. So as much as, it's much easier to build a new home and make it as energy-efficient as possible, there's more challenges with keeping an existing home, but we're doing as much as we can with it to bring it up to as many values of energy efficiency as we can.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
I don't have any questions. I have commented. It's a unique lot, in a unique position.
Yes.
And I think it's the position that makes it really easy to come to a conclusion, at least in my mind, because to the north, there is this buffer zone, and it's never going to be used by anyone, and it's just, it's the perfect, becomes the perfect neighbor, if you will, for what you want to do. And I like the concept of what I see in the plan, that it's gonna look pretty much like what it is, just modern, fresher, fresher.
We wanted to freshen it up, but we didn't want to stand out from the neighborhood.
Right.
We didn't want to build this monstrosity that would just be out of place in the neighborhood.
And it's definitely not a, an obstructive-type request here that you want to build, like you said, somebody would be upset with a two-story addition, but this fits right in, and when this is done, you won't even know that it happened.
No.
It's a property that I'm kind of looking forward to see when it's done. I think it's got great potential.
Any further comments or questions?
Yes, I noticed that the right-of-way for this Devon is 85 feet on width, and if it had been a typical right-of-way, it would be 66 feet. It seems to me that now this house is going to infringe on the right-of-way by some six-and-a-half feet.
This is not going into the right-of-way at all. If you look at, this is actually showing you where the curb line is. This is the south curb line of Devon. So the right-of-way, 85 feet, is from here to off of the map. So this is...
Where the property line is.
This is the property line, right here. This is the north property line of their house, and then from this property line north is 85 feet before you hit the property line of the house to the north. So the addition is about 22 and 1/2 feet from the north property line. It is 59 and 1/2 feet from the actual curb line of Devon Avenue.
Which is why some lots are...
It's in that 69 feet that you have the woods.
Correct, correct. There's numerous trees in the right-of-way.
In effect, it's a little bit like a parkway, a median, a...
Right.
...as you can see. It'll block, as it does today, it will still continue to block.
Don't like that.
If you south into this property. So it, it's just a natural, I think.
These houses face the street.
This, the park, so what we would consider the parkway, so the distance from the property line to the curb line, that parkway is approximately 30 feet wide. Typically, what you see, you have a five-foot sidewalk, and then you have about a five-foot grassy area. So it's about 20 feet wider than what you normally see on a typical street.
Yeah, they actually had planning when that was put through.
Right.
Any further comments or concerns?
I just, it's kind of one of the most bizarre cases I've seen since I've been on, with the three streets and the front yard isn't really the front yard, and it's, so I don't have a problem. I think it looks...
And the third street's in a different county.
I was thankful it was south of, on the south end of Devon Road.
Yeah. At this point, we shall open it up to the public, anyone in the audience, big teeming audience out there. Any further discussion or motions?
I would make a motion to pass along to the village board a positive recommendation to approve item number 19-18, longer Felder at 415 South Hickory.
The motion is their second.
Second.
It's been moved by George, seconded by Bob. At this point, we shall close the public hearing. Please, any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Joe Bano.
No.
Bobbikaro.
Yes.
Guy Papa.
Yes.
Mike Wearden.
Yes.
George Cosiel.
Yes.
Okay, we shall pass on a positive recommendation to the board. Stay in touch with Christie to find out when it appears on their agenda. Next item on the agenda is case number 19-14, fence height in the corner side yard text amendment.
At the July 16, 2019 village board meeting, the board reviewed and approved a request to grant a variation to allow a six-foot-tall fence located approximately 25 feet off South Bartlett Road, which is considered a minor arterial, in the corner side yard for 114 Lamont Parkway. I think you guys remember seeing that earlier this summer.
Right, right.
At that point, staff was directed to look into modifying the fence height requirement in corner side yards when fences are set back from the property line, especially along major streets. Since 1990, there have been 57 residential corner side yard fence variation requests. The zoning ordinance previously restricted the maximum fence height to three feet in front and corner side yards. In 2015, a text amendment was approved by ordinance 2015-97 to increase the maximum height of fences in front and corner side yards to four feet. Nineteen of the variation requests were for fences between 3 and 1/2 and 4 feet tall and would not have required a variation after the 2015 text amendment. Staff researched all the previous variation requests to allow five- and six-foot fences in the corner side yard. The chart below, or the chart that's in your memo, shows what the approval rate has been and the number of requests in each of those instances. The zoning board appeals recommended approval, and the village board approved two variation requests for a five-foot and six-foot tall fence when it was located along a major arterial with the fence being set back six inches. There are only three major arterials in the village of Bartlett. We have Route 59, Lake Street, and County Farm Road. The zoning board of appeals has generally recommended approval of fence variations for fences five to six feet tall along all other street designations when the fence is set back at least 10 feet from the corner side property line. Planning staff often has to talk to residents at the counter, explaining the fence height restrictions to residents that submit a building permit for fences exceeding four-feet height in the corner side yard. Many residents have stated that having to install a taller fence at the building, having to install a shorter fence at the building setback takes away the benefit of owning a corner lot and makes their corner side yards less usable. Based on our analysis of the zoning board of appeals and village board's vote on fence variations, staff prepared a text amendment to the zoning ordinance, which will increase the fence height in the required corner side yard from four feet to six feet tall, provided the fence is set back at least six inches from roads designated as major arterials, and set back a minimum of 10 feet from all other road designations. The maximum fence height in the required front yard would remain four feet, and the maximum fence height in the vision clearance triangle would remain three feet. The proposed text amendment would allow residents to apply for a building permit immediately rather than delaying the permitting process while going through the 45- to 60-day variation process. If the text amendment that is proposed had been in effect in 1990 to today, 64% of the petitions for fence height variations would have been eliminated. So the text amendment is attached, and as is the chart showing, listing of all the variation requests that have gone through the process since 1990.
I think it's a wonderful idea that property at 114 Lamont Parkway was so unique. They have an in-ground pool over there, and the fence looks better than what the other one was, and they're not through with the landscaping. They intend to put more in there next year. It looks sharp, and it gives them a lot of privacy with the pool without worrying that somebody's gonna jump the fence and climb in. I think this probably has been a long time coming. We've always been reluctant, in many cases, to go too high, but as you said, when you're alongside some of these major arterials or even minor arterials, I mean, South Bartlett Road's not considered an artery, and look how busy it is.
Right. We also just approved the one that was on Gerber, the corner side yard was on Gerber.
Okay. So this will eliminate a lot of unnecessary time delays for people trying to get summer projects done?
Correct.
Any discussion from anyone else?
Just a general question, so that I really understand. As Mike was just talking about, the 114 Lamont Parkway, if, if the distance from the property line had been 10 feet, would it still be approved?
Yes.
Because it's not a major arterial, 59 Lake Street.
Correct.
Okay, then it makes perfectly good sense. I think it makes it a lot more consistent, and like it stated, it makes it easier for someone when they're coming in, that we're not nitpicking on the fence issue, and it's easy to understand. And as so many other changes in ordinances, again, I like the chart, works well.
You know, what I remember years ago along Granache and Devon Avenue, of course, it was a county road, so they were able to put up their six-foot fence along there, it didn't matter, and then the homeowner came in for us, and we denied it. So then they had to put their three-foot fence along there, and it ended up looking ridiculous. And I think, you know, we need some consistency when it's not in the vision triangle.
And uniformity, and what we tried to do is we analyzed what this board recommended, and that's what we drafted. We went, you typically have approved fences when they're set back 10 feet.
Yes.
So that's how we wrote it.
Makes it more of a safety factor, so that somebody's not behind it waiting to jump somebody.
Right. And aesthetically, it looks better. We've had a lot of people that want the privacy and want to go all the way, end up putting the four-foot fence to avoid getting, going through the variation process, and then they plant shrubs next to the fence that's right at the property line, and then it overhangs into the sidewalk and creates a code enforcement issue.
Yes.
People doing that. So this way, it's kind of a compromise to allow people to have the privacy, use more of their backyard, but still leave some open space so that you don't get that fenced-in feel when you're driving down a street.
As you do on Newport Boulevard.
Makes sense to me.
I guess we have to open it up to the public. Nobody's here. Any further discussion or motions?
Oh, we have evidence of the publication.
Oh, sorry.
You're slipping.
Yes, boy. Mailings, the newspapers, and the sign. See, the trick, George, I do that alphabetical, mailings, M, newspaper, and then the sign.
I'll make a motion to pass on a positive recommendation to the village board for approval of 19, or 2019-14, fences in corner side yard text amendment.
Second.
It's been moved by Bob, seconded by George. At this point, we shall close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Joe Bano.
Yes.
Bobbikaro.
Yes.
Guy Papa.
Yes.
George Cosiel.
Yes.
Mike Wearden.
Yes.
Very good. Okay, the Chromebook training.
Why don't we, before we do that, I just wanted to say, the staff wanted to say thank you for your service. We've provided you with some small gifts. The gifts differ depending on the length of your service, and if it's an anniversary year, 5, 10, 15, that kind of thing, the welcome gifts, the candy, and we wanted to pay a special tribute to Mike, who has served for 40 years. And, yes. And he is going to be honored, along with the other two commission members from the EDC and the Plan Commission, who have also served 40 years. There's three of them, and they will be honored in January. I don't have, which meeting date, I'm not sure of, but yes, you will, you're gonna get a special honor, so.
Wow.
Okay, so thank you very much. We really appreciate it. You are all volunteers, and it means a lot to the village, so thank you.
It was more of a challenge in the earlier years when we never missed a meeting and we didn't have deadlines. We'd go on until midnight sometimes.
We don't like that, yeah.
No, we cut them off at 10:00. And back then, we allowed smoking, and there was even, John Malliter was the chairman, he was a cigar smoker, and even the cigarette smokers didn't like that cigar.
You're dating yourself, Mike.
Oh, so I'm, it's a lot more pleasant now.
The other thing we wanted to do is do a poll. We have, our next meeting is January 2nd. We do have an item. How many of you could make it, or do you not want to have a meeting that night and change the date?
I'm fine with it.
I'm fine, I don't care.
That's two.
I'm good.
Three.
I'm fine.
Four.
I believe I'm good.
Okay, so the second, you, okay, all right. And then, now we've got Chromebook training, because we are going green and paperless here at the village, and we, each of you is getting a Chromebook, and we are going to send you links. You're gonna get an email and link from Kim from here on out, starting in January. It's gonna come through your Chromebook, and you're going to not get a paper packet anymore. So, we're gonna sit here and go through it. We're gonna also pass out their IT, what is it, their guidelines?
Yeah, that's with the...
Right. Yeah, you're gonna have to sign something saying that you've been given the, what is it, the, what's it called? Where do you have it?
I'm ready.
Let's see, what's it called?
Uh, it is the...
Email?
Email.
Release, permission, something. Yes.
Email retention.
Email retention policy. That you have read it, you understand it, and you have to sign that form and give it back to us tonight. That you have read it, you understand it, and you have to sign that form and give it back to us tonight.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Email. Mike, your number one. George is two. Joe Bano is three. Bob's four, and Guy, your number five. So if you want, like, we, you can open your Chromebook if you want to walk through the stuff. We've already sent you an email to today's packet. We need you to open it, and let's test it. Make sure you've got it. Not that we have any doubts or anything. And a little white sticker. Yes. Yeah, the white stickers, you got your email on it?
ZBA?
I'm secretive.
At gmail dot com.
ZBA two at gmail dot com.
Yeah, I understand. The older you get, the smaller the text becomes.
I'm telling you, it really does. That's about it.
Oh, look at that.
Okay, so now you put your password.
What is the password?
The password is right here on the upper right-hand corner. Got it.
Could you make it longer?
No, no, just one right here. That's the address, here. Two.
Okay.
That's what it is. Your password's your password.
See, can you show her?
And then the greater that.
Whatever you don't have to change.
The greatness?
No.
Good.
Did you put it in?
Oh, that's a help.
Yeah. Yeah. And then, in the back, four cases.
Now, I don't see...
Hey, all right.
I could, yes, I got it. I can plug an ergonomic keyboard into this, right?
How often should we check these?
We're really only going to send you an email. Right, we're going to say the packet's there. We'll still send an email to your regular account to let you know that it's been sent, because...
Next to the internet automatic.
We are getting some tech here. Did everybody get? We'll send an email still to your regular accounts to let you know we've sent the link to your Gmail.
Yep, I'm up.
It's pretty easy.
There's your inbox, so you have one. So open your, just go to your inbox.
Okay.
Is this touchscreen?
No, I think you just have to click on the email from Christie. Oh, you gotta do this.
I see, yeah.
There you go. I haven't done this yet either, so we'll learn together. Hit enter.
You should have been able...
My glasses with me, so I'm having a hard time with it, that's why.
Yeah.
Like I said, the beauty of it is that you're going to be able to enlarge whatever you need to see on this screen and review the plans more accurately, because to get it on paper...
My eyeballs aren't working.
Okay. So you're going to be able to see everything a lot better.
Has the link to your packet.
Wow, look at that.
Might still thinking about something.
Oh, that's just the setup, just ignore that. Don't worry about that. That's a...
Well, oh.
Oh, yours is a touchscreen.
It is a touchscreen.
No, no, I didn't do that. I used... It's a touchscreen?
These actually are refurbished. They were cheap.
Were they?
Yes, we saved a lot of money on these.
Now, do you have to double-click, Bob? I don't, why is his not coming up, Christie? There it is, there's the email. You got it, okay.
You might want to maximize your screen.
Now, are they supposed to pull up the agenda or something?
Well, it's the whole packet.
So what are they clicking on? So then, here's your link, okay, so you click on the blue word link.
There you go.
Click on that, and then click on the...
Oh, my bifocal.
Over here a little bit more.
Bifocal.
There you go. So you can do that, or you can use the arrow keys.
What I was doing was this. So you should be able to cursor, you should be able to cursor to it.
Here's your link to the packet, so click it.
Yeah, whatever's easier, whatever you like.
And there you go. So then, like, if you go to one of the, if you scroll down a little bit more...
It is a touchscreen, you can manipulate it like this.
Oh, cool.
You know?
Sorry.
So you can, like, zoom in, if you move your cursor over here, you can zoom in. It'll be a plus or minus.
See, look at that.
There, you can zoom in if you want to with the plus.
Right, yeah, okay.
That's what I mean.
That's great.
Do it that way, yeah.
Now, can you, if you want to make a note or highlight something that you want to talk about?
I think they do.
You could double-click. You could double-tap, and then it highlights it, and I'm sure you can...
Maybe.
If you do this, you start to lose the radiant edge. I would like to think that I could do something that would be able to bring it back to the left. Yeah, would I do that now?
So you just, the eraser, you do it that way.
I would think that I should be able to...
It should be centered there. You can just move it.
Oh, okay, so it is a touchscreen.
It is a touchscreen, yeah.
Oh, okay, because I was trying to do it through, through the cursor.
Right.
Okay.
Bring them to the meetings.
Everything that I can do.
Yeah, which would be great for things like naps.
Only thing I can't understand is why Apple doesn't do this. I have nothing but Apple equipment, I don't... I like everything that they do, except I don't understand, well, I have a desktop. Their laptops do touch.
Roberta, this is a faulty pen.
Can you see what I mean?
I thought, is this a trick?
Sleep mode, or not sleep, but...
Eight is the fifth.
Use that, like, when I come back the next time.
So there's something, I didn't realize we had the EDC for forty years.
I'll say, that was a similar night, too. It was all right in that seventy-nine.
She reminds me of when I used to work. I was shouting out some email.
This is, yeah, this is very cool.
So, besides...
Let me read that again.
Besides staff, Christie, or you, or, I mean, are we going to get emails from anybody else?
You should.
Okay.
Question, it's gone into like a standby mode. I don't see a delete, you know, Control Alt Delete. I see the Control Alt, I don't...
Search.
Get it back.
If it was a newspaper, I could go to a section.
I don't know, let me see.
Maybe there might be, I tried to escape.
I don't know, let's go down here. Oh, it's this. Let's go back to your emails.
So what is really the...
So I double-clicked on the email icon. Then her email will come back up?
Yeah, this is Windows. Yeah.
It is Windows.
It's Windows. So if you go on...
Okay, I didn't notice, okay.
You just click on that, and then you should click on the link again.
All right.
Yeah, okay.
Then you could type in, like, see, Mike, look at all of it, look how big that is.
You can just blow that baby up and...
I'm on the green team, so I may get back.
The green team.
So you would recommend each month when we're done, just to delete?
No, you don't have to, no, no, no. And actually, that might be a good document for you to go back to something later on, if you want to save it, like the Lamont Parkway one, you could go back to that, so, no, you don't have to delete it.
So there's enough room to...
Oh, I think there's enough storage on here for quite a while. Yeah, it's a standard Gmail account, you can hold a lot, yeah. Any questions, anybody? Did I get all the sheets?
You're not going to be sending us jokes through here, are you?
No, no jokes, it's all going to be very formal and professional.
Is there a shutdown icon here somewhere to turn it off?
The shutdown is down at the bottom right-hand corner.
Bottom right, okay.
It kind of looks like your Wi-Fi signal.
I see the Wi-Fi.
Where?
Down at the bottom right-hand corner. Go here, and you can go to the power button to turn it off.
How do we turn it on again?
When you just open, when you open the book up, it automatically comes on.
It's not this one, is it?
Yes, if you click there, and then that button right there is your power button.
Right, right, okay.
So are we good to close the meeting? Are you guys good? Do you have any questions?
This will save you a lot of paper.
Save a ton of paper.
Bifocal allotment?
Nice try, though.
That's what, you can make it bigger, George.
Can't make it bigger enough. Gave me homework.
Do have that instruction sheet, so you can refer back to that, you can give us a call. We're going to try to make it as easy as we can.
Who do I call?
Don't do it tomorrow, because I'm not in tomorrow.
On Monday.
That's no excuse. Who's your bag?
You're not getting your packet for several weeks.
You can call me, and I can try to help you. You can call me.
So we just need a, are we good? We just need to close the meeting, we have our time.
Okay, I guess this is the end. How many people are going to make it to the Christmas party?
That's the plan.
Joe?
I think I've got a birthday party to go to for one of my grandkids.
Oh, okay. All right, entertaining motion to adjourn?
So moved.
The move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
See you next month. See you in two...